Good evening. Thank you for joining us today at our town hall to discuss choice. We're very grateful for everybody that's here. I want to thank in advance all the families that provided feedback regarding the choice process and just wanting everyone to know that we took the feedback very seriously. As a result, we made modifications to the choice process that we're looking forward to present today. I know that one of the pieces of concern was the lottery component that we have significantly modified based on the feedback provided by families. We're looking forward to having a productive dialogue today that will lead to a number of follow-up conversations and small group meetings throughout the scope of the next few weeks. We have several activities scheduled that I will speak to in a few moments. But before I go into further details, I just want to kindly ask that as we engage in this conversation today, that we're respectful of one another and that we engage in a productive and collaborative conversation. That I look forward to utilizing the information tonight alongside the rest of the team to inform the work that we're doing for the betterment of our children. Before I move into the presentation, our chair, Colin Houston, will have a few words to share.
Thank you, Dr. Stray. And good evening to everyone. Although tonight's gathering is not a meeting of the Board of Education, I did want to take a minute to briefly address our constituents who are here tonight on behalf of my colleagues on the Board of Education before we go into the presentation. And first and foremost, we want to thank you all for being here or for following along on YouTube for those who are not here. We want you to note that we are always appreciative of community and parent engagement, which honestly helps us serve you better. And we do invite and encourage everyone to continue to take part in our board meetings and workshops, which have been open to in-person participation since July 2021. Please come out. We have a workshop tomorrow. I would love to see you all there as well. Tonight, we're going to get, we're all going to get some clarity on the district's proposal to add more choices for middle school families. But what I wanted to spend a minute before, before we get into that doing is to note and acknowledge that much of the confusion and frustration that our families have been feeling this past week stems from a miscommunication from the district in which a staff member incorrectly framed the choice program as mandatory for every fifth grade student. That was not the board's original intention. And while our role is largely restricted to policy and budget oversight, at the end of the day, this is a team effort. And I understand that while the updated communication went out confirming that students will continue to be guaranteed assignment in their local middle schools, the initial communication error had already impacted the community's confidence in the district and made many parents both concerned and frustrated. And I wanted to spend a minute acknowledging that. We are one NPS family. We're in this together for the best interest of our children. And our goal tonight is to move forward with a clearer understanding of the choices proposed to families for next year. And as Dr. Stray said, to continue to engage in this conversation and feedback respectfully, enthusiastically, and positively. Thank you, and I'll turn it back over to Dr. Stray.
Thank you, Chair. So I just want to provide an overview of today's town hall. We're going to be introducing the middle and high school choice process. We're going to solicit feedback for further review and revision. And we're going to provide a timeline for the community of additional community conversations and information that will be available throughout the scope of the next few weeks. Just an overview of what we're hoping to accomplish. We're going to be engaging in introduction, presentation, and then Q and A in common opportunity for the community at large. In terms of the timeline of the work that we're hoping to engage in, we have a number of opportunities to, one, inform the community of the choice process, what is in place, what we're hoping to continue to develop over time, and also provide opportunities for families to learn from the different schools throughout the district, what programs are currently in place, what pathway options are available at the middle school as well as high school level, and also provide opportunities for further information dissemination and feedback gathering. So we have a number of middle school choice process conversations and information sessions set up at the family center. The first one will take place October 11. Then followed by that, October 13, we have scheduled the Middle School Choice Fair, which will afford an opportunity for all families to learn about the different pathways that are available in our middle schools. And followed by that fair, we will have two additional sessions throughout the month of October at the family center where families can continue to come and acquire information about the process and also provide us feedback. In December, we're looking to launch the lottery for those families that are interested in participating in the choice process. As articulated in the communication sent out these past few days, it was communicated that every family will have a guaranteed seat in their feeder school in terms of the middle school. In January of 2023, we will launch the high school lottery process, which also is based on available seats, and it's something that has been in effect for over now two years. And finally, in March, the elementary school lottery that is mainly focused around our magnet programs across the district, and it's something that has been embedded in our schools for some time. As we thought about and engaged in this conversation around choice, like I articulated, it stems back to as early as 2013 when the NECA program was first introduced in connection also with the IB program at Brian McMahon High School. The NECA program, which was the Norwalk Early College Academy, was then converted to PTAC, which continues to be an instrumental program throughout our district. And we also have CGS as an additional choice at our high schools. Within those, we've had throughout the scope of several years infuse a number of additional pathways to enrich our students' learning experiences stemming from marine science, international baccalaureate programs, as well as language development programs for students who are interested in engaging in those processes, and even digital media and a number of other programs. What we want to ensure that when we create these pathways and opportunities, that we are affording opportunities for all students and aligning that to our mission as well as our vision, where we are focused on making sure that all students are well-prepared for life and beyond. And in order to do this, we want to make sure that we provide students with the opportunity to explore different career pathways and fields of study that will, one, enrich their experience, but also allow them to further engage in areas of interest. As I articulated in engaging in this work, we want to make sure not only that it's aligned to the vision, but also in alignment to a lot of the research that shows that exposing students to pathways or in areas of interest increases engagement, increases rigor around academic coursework. And we're not saying that we will not continue to provide the core courses because those are instrumental in the learning experiences of our students, but we will also provide enrichment opportunities that students can further explore areas of interest. It also, research has shown that creating these opportunities also increases attendance, increases graduation rates, and helps students develop a career readiness, the career readiness skills that will be essential to their continual development. And like I articulated earlier, the middle school pathway process had begun now for a number of years. Some of them in middle school standing as early as 2014, when some of the world languages were introduced at Wotton Middle School, 2017, when the STEM program started. And CMS, as you know, infusing the Bank Street model stems back as early as the 1980s when this program was put in place. And we provided that magnet option across the district.
Good evening, everybody. As I'll talk about in just a moment around our process and how the lottery actually works, a couple of points we wanted to make was to make sure once again that everybody understands that all students are guaranteed a seat in their feeder schools if they wish to remain in those schools, but they will have options to enter a lottery, to enter any of our other choice programs that have availability. Students that are interested in that program will have that ability to apply throughout the district. And we also want to make sure that everybody knows that transportation will be provided for all students in grade six that are going to choice programs as well as in high school based around state transportation guidelines.
So, good evening. So what is currently in place is if you wanted to attend a school that's outside of your feeder pattern or outside of your neighborhood, you would actually have to fill out an intra-district transfer form and actually request approval from the building principal. And currently in that process outlined in that regulation is that transportation is not provided because we have not been able to provide transportation up until now for people that were wanting to attend school outside of their feeder pattern. So the difference is, is that for the upcoming school year, we were able to actually make transportation available for families that are choosing in the sixth grade to attend a choice program that is outside of their feeder pattern. So if you make a choice that you want to go to a school that offers a program and that's not the typical school that your sixth grader would be going to, we would be able to offer you transportation as long as it abides by the state's transportation regulation, which means if you're within walking distance, you would still obviously walk. But if you qualify, if you're outside of the 1.5 mile zone, we would provide the transportation.
One of the things that, once again, when we discuss the process is that in general, all public school students want to, we want to make sure that they have opportunities for various different types of learning experiences, not limited necessarily to the neighborhoods where they live. And this lottery system for middle and high schools will create a system that is equitable, ensuring that all students have a chance of pursuing passions if they choose to. So how does this lottery system work? So the way the lottery system will work is that if students are interested in any specific program that is not in their feeder school, they will have the opportunity to enter a centralized lottery for available seats in that program of interest. Throughout this whole application process, parents are welcome to reach out to their schools or guidance counselors at the elementary schools. We'll be reaching out to parents as well, fifth grade parents, to tell them a little bit more about the process. And there will also be representatives at the family center that are available if you would like to learn more about that process, as well as those evenings that you just heard about in our timeline that will be open at the family center for additional information. The middle school process will actually mirror the way that we do our high school choice program right now. So we did run the same lottery last year to be able to place students into choice programs at the high school. The system will work exactly the same. And one of the questions that did come up is that, you know, the process that we're following for the 23-24 school year for students to come in is going to be the same for subsequent years for all of our students. So it's in sixth grade that they'll have those options to be able to look at different programs that are available and enter a lottery system. So one of the reasons why we've changed the lottery system too at this level is in the past, if you're aware with CMS, we'll give you one example, our lotteries were done at the building level. This really limits parents and families to have access to all the different programs and really know a little more about these programs or if their students would be interested in them. So we want to make sure that this lottery system is actually now centralized. It'll actually be done in conjunction. It's a computerized system that's connected to Power School. Once a student enters a lottery, a formula will actually randomly generate the accepted students into slots that are open and then create a wait list for all students for those choice programs. And one thing to note, another question that had come up recently was if a student is accepted into a middle school program, this really is, this is not a guarantee of acceptance into the equivalent high school program. You will run the lottery again for my third.
So transportation, so transportation study was done by Transcar in the fall of 2021. And in this feasibility study, it focused on the financial, the logistical impact of what it would mean for us if we wanted to offer this same choice program during our sixth grade year for rising fifth graders. So we were able to actually do that. We're able to get a cost, and we actually made it cost neutral because the buses that had been transporting the students that were going to Hunter's Lane from Jefferson, we held on to those buses, and we actually have those buses available for this program. So one additional bus may be needed for the 23-24 school year, depending on the number of families that choose the program outside of their feeder or neighborhood school. But we do have that study that demonstrates what the cost impact would be if it's greater than that 20% or that 15% that we were anticipating.
So last year, we had our high school choice offerings, and we had our first choice fair and district lottery. And for this year, it will be the same, but we've expanded some of our options. Eligibility for these programs is based on available seats in each choice program. It's important that whatever high school they attend, the core instruction will be the same and areas tested around the standards will be the same as well. If we look at our four high schools, we have many different offerings. Last year, we offered seats to the Medical Health Academy and the Marine Science Academy at Brian McMahon. We also have Arabic and Mandarin and Japanese at CGS, and we have the DMCA or the Digital Media Communications at Norwalk High. At PTAC, we have three offerings focused on software engineering, web development, and mobile programming. This year, however, we will expand those offerings to include the IB middle years program at Brian McMahon and the IB Career Pathway Project Lead the Way at Brian McMahon. At Norwalk High, we have the Culinary Arts Program, the Performing Arts Pathway, the Arts Pathway, and the Music Pathway. So more opportunities for students to take advantage of these programs at the different high schools. So for middle school, it will be a similar pathway opportunity. Each choice program will allow students to explore their interests and help them decide maybe what they want to pursue in high school. Students at all of the middle schools will receive the same core instruction, and it is based on availability of these programs. At our five middle schools, we have different opportunities. We have the Bank Street Model at Concord or CMS. At Nathan Howell, we have the Arts Integration Pathway, and we have the IB, they're an IB candidate school. At Ponus, it is the STEAM Academy. At Wotton, they have the Global Studies Pathway that offers Mandarin and Japanese, and they're also an IB candidate school. At WestRock, they have the Dual Language Program and the Environmental Marine Science Program, and they also have Visual Performing Arts. So those will have available seats if students are interested.
And just to sum up, we will continue to provide ongoing conversation and dialogue. We will be posting these additional opportunities for conversations and for the other four families to visit the different programs that will be available, particularly at the middle school and high school level through the choice fairs that we will be coordinating. The first one being October 13 for the middle school programs. Now we're going to move into questions and public comments. So we are going to take five public comments and then transition to five questions that have been provided to the communications team. So we're just going to gather the list for public comments and the questions. Before we close out, if anyone has a question, please make sure that you hand it over to...
If we have a question that surfaced just in this discussion, should we go off?
Yes.
Well, thank you very much.
So as people are, some people are writing down their questions. If towards the end of this evening, we don't get to respond to all the questions, we will add any additional question that has not been answered to the FAQs so that all the information is available if the question asked is not one that's answered this evening.
Wonderful. Well, good evening again. We would like to have everyone be able to either comment or ask questions. So we can start, we're going to be alternating with comments and questions. Let's have following to up the mic. Now, just a reminder, everyone gets two minutes to make your public comment. So can we have Randy Funk?
They can't hear you. Can you speak to them?
Sorry, Sebastian, Daisy Sebastian, Priscilla Farrell, Mary Smith, and Donna S.
Hello, everybody. I am Randy Funk. Probably don't know me, but I have three questions. I'll try and condense it as easy as possible. So far, I've heard that there's been a horrible mistake with the original communication that came out and that's since been corrected, addresses some of the concerns that we've all had. My question number one is, how are you going to ensure that communications like this don't continue to happen? It seems to happen more often these days. And my first question is that. Here, I guess you don't answer it right now. The second question is, you've talked a lot about research and, you know, evidence supporting that pathways lead to greater equity, greater interest, greater education. Not doubting that. Have you done research to find out how important communities are and to conduct that, especially for young kids, to ensure that there's a balance between the two? And how does that leverage against the fact that the core curriculum is failing right now? So we haven't really addressed that. Because it's great to be able to study molecular biology, but it doesn't really help if you can't add 10 plus 10. And the first thing I'd say, you're going to run out of time, but the last thing I would like to say is you've mentioned a lot about students not being, you know, not having to take the lottery and all that stuff. My question is simple. Is there a choice to not participate in the pathway system at all at any level? And if so, what is the frequency of that decision? Is it once a year? And then the last thing, if I have 13 seconds, is how do we ensure that, how do we ensure that you guys aren't always reacting to public opinion as opposed to being proactive and knowing what it is before you do all of these things? That would be my third question.
Hello. Okay. Hi, I'm Daisy Sebastian. I have two kids at WestRock Middle School and two kids at Silvermine Elementary School.
I have two kids at West Rock's Middle School and two kids at Silvermine Elementary School. I don't understand this pathways program. You've just explained how we're going to do the lottery. Why? Why do our fifth graders have to choose a career path at 10 years old? It makes no sense. Why aren't we getting back to the basics? Our kids are behind in reading, writing, and math. I want my kid to be able to have strong executive functioning skills. I want them to have strong coping skills. I want them to have strong problem solving skills. Where did our SEL program go? Mental health is a real problem. These kids are not a great example. And my last question to you is, the other day, I received two emails and a Facebook post regarding a tree down at West Rock's Middle School, and that our kids somehow survived less than an hour without power. That was three correspondences. How many emails did I get regarding this very large decision back in March? How many did I get? Zero. Zero. We are not included in the conversation. And Dr. Straya, as our leader, and I know you have the capability of being a great leader, you need to include us in the conversation. As a mother, I know that you expect to be part of the conversation, and so do we. We demand to be part of the conversation and not after we call the paper and we call News 12 and we stand in front of City Hall. We do before that all happens. Thank you.
Priscilla?
Thanks, everyone. I'm taking kind of a different turn here with comments. I completely appreciate entirely the modification you made to the choice program. It relates to me, not because I'm a reader. I have two grandchildren in Rowton, and I entirely appreciate what Colin has been through on social media and the ranker, and that he has been accused of having a personal agenda, smacks of discrimination to me, that he is attacked when he's an educator and has advanced degrees is, I can't even fathom. I have trust in the school system. My grandchildren will attend Norwalk Public Schools, and thank you for the elegance in which you've approached what was really a diatribe over the last week, and I think politically inspired. Thank you.
Mary Smith.
Hi, I'm Mary Smith. I'm a Silvermine parent. I have fifth grade and third grade, and I have to say, as a fifth grade parent, getting that email with zero warning and now less than two months to make choices, which to me is kind of a disservice. A choice, I would think, means I'm truly choosing, not I'm going to apply and then my name be pulled out of a hat. Those are two very different things to me. A choice and a lottery do not equal the same thing in my mind. But my biggest true question besides that is, my kids are at Silvermine Dual Language, and I love this program with all my heart. It's amazing that my monolingual, English-speaking children can read fluently in Spanish and will be doing that. I was so excited when it was finally, this year, a full dual language program at West Rock's Middle School. But why is there no guarantee that my dual language Silvermine children will get into the dual language at West Rock's? That does not make sense. That is a pathway to be bi-literate for the rest of their life. Please don't cut that off. And then also, how are you going to accept other children in the dual language if they have not been exposed to that? That doesn't make sense either. So those spots would then not be filled, and then I'm nervous that that program might be taken away from the Silvermine community and the West Rock's community. Those are my big ones right there. I'm worried about my kids, and I want their paths to be able to continue. Oh, and also, same thing for high school. For one, want to criticize why in Global Studies is there not Spanish when we have dual language Spanish now in elementary and middle school? And also, why wouldn't there be guarantees for these pathways to continue in high school if they're going to be doing them in middle school? That doesn't make sense.
Donna S.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing the public to speak. My name is Donna Smirnianopoulos. I'd like to thank you for your opening remarks, and if you would give me permission to paraphrase a little bit, what I heard was, "Your children are our number three concern." A word that comes up frequently in this discussion about middle school choice is equity. What does the Board of Ed mean by equity in the context of middle school choice? What is equitable about the Board of Education's and the city's failure to deliver new schools to South Norwalk five years after the ELEP plan was approved? And let's stop pretending, the oft-repeated lie, that the decision to pull the plug on the ELEP project happened at the State Department of Environmental Protection, and that no one from the Norwalk delegation to Hartford had anything to do with pulling the plug on that project. I think there are many people who are very familiar with what exactly happened with the ELEP project. Here we are, five years later, with the city poised to purchase a large parcel in South Norwalk, and I have zero confidence that that too will not end up as fortress apartments. So, you know, the other possibility on the ELEP plan was to advance somebody's pet project that was going on behind the back of the Board of Education in 2019, and none of those people are sitting here today. But the Norwalk High School plan was never part of the Board of Ed's agenda while that plan was being concocted in Hartford and is currently under investigation by the FBI. So I'm not holding my breath on that. But finally, let's return to equities, the board's favorite buzzword. What does equity mean to you? To me, equity means the Board of Ed needs to ensure that all middle schools are equally excellent, and where the likelihood of skills acquisition is high. Pathways, to me, sounds like just another buzzword like equity. Reliance on jargon is to distract us from systemic problems in the Norwalk Public Schools, problems delivering a rigorous academic program to all students regardless of feeder school. Finally, I'd like to draw your attention to sign at the back of the auditorium. You work for us. Time to listen. Thank you.
So we're going to go through some questions here. It's a multiple school, Rotten family here. "Especially as programs are added, will the school days be longer or will other classes be phased out, like health, art, or library?"
"Especially as programs are added," what's the second piece?
"Especially as programs are added, will the school days be longer or will other classes be phased out, like health, art, or library?"
No, I mean, health, health is a state requirement, but no, there would be, it would be built in as enrichment opportunities, so the day wouldn't be longer. There would be opportunities during the day, might be another special, or might be another opportunity for students to take those courses.
Great, thank you. This question from Anna T. from CMS. "If a child goes to a choice school through the lottery and wants to return to their zone school in later years, are they still guaranteed a spot in the zone school?"
Yes, they will be.
Robert S. Royd in Rotten. "Please explain how, please explain how decisions was reached to spend time and resources on this program as opposed to many other underfunded programs in Norwalk middle schools."
So the choice program has been something that has been ongoing as far back, like I would typically, it's from 2013, and has been something that has been part of the strategic plan, the previous strategic plan in 2016, and is a continuation of that work in providing choice, either through pathways or magnet program options. One example of the work that we recently did as an extension of what had already been started was Wolf Pit Elementary School, which became a magnet program with a focus on the arts. And it's, it's been a continuation of that. Jefferson Elementary has partnered with the Maritime Aquarium in collaboration with West Rock to develop a marine science program that would connect to the work that's already happening at Bryan McMahon High School.
Thank you. So this is where we're on the transportation study from here from Bryan McMahon. "How did middle school choice go from 20% estimated participation in March to 100% mandatory participation in September? What, what did DOE vote on, and how did it change?"
So the level of classes automatically, many families would have, were going to select their feeder school as a primary choice. It was an opportunity to then also offer the choices of the other programs throughout the district. But based on the feedback we received from families, it's clear that parents want to have that guarantee to their feeder program, and we made that modification to ensure that they have that option.
Was it a mistake or not? That's enough. Bye, everyone.
So from Drew for NIH. "How are you going to have enough buses with construction for NIH, starting in all the athletes needing to be bused for practice and games? Was that included in the study?"
So I believe the question was, "How are we going to have enough busing for us to be able to transport the athletes due to the Norwalk High School project and still be able to transport parents who choose to go outside of their feeder pattern? Is that correct? Okay. So we, we're actually contracting with a separate company to be able to provide the fleet of buses that we will need for the Norwalk High School project. So currently, our DORA transportation is who we will be using. Those buses are already here for the three additional buses for the, the choice programs. So for the Norwalk High School, PTEC Norwalk project, it's a totally separate project. That project has its own budget line, that it's part of the, the cost for the construction project, and it'll be another company that we would subcontract with."
You keep talking about busing, it's okay, it's sitting right now. You can't use our school a lot of time right now. All we can talk about is the challenges that we have right now as a school district. Because you're now here to take something that's so broken and flawed and add all these pathways, driving people all around town.
Yeah, so let's, we're going to have a set of comments now. Nalini Jones? Sorry.
Hi, I'm Nalini. I have kids in high school at CGS and at Rotten. We are districted, actually, for different schools, so we have benefited from middle school choice, all of my kids. I will say this, though, I have my reservations about how this decision got made and how it got communicated, but particularly how it got made, applied to sort of my reservations about a lot of decisions that we're hearing from MPS. One real challenge that I see is that when one of my kids was in fifth grade, she was actually told that the best school for her to go to would be Nathan Hale because she was a strong math student. And at the time, Nathan Hale was the math teacher. By the time she, that's at fifth grade. By the time she was in seventh grade, Nathan Hale wasn't the math school anymore. By the time she was in eighth grade, they were looking into arts integration for Nathan Hale. She didn't happen to go there, she picked something else. But it's a worry. It's a worry that all of these constants keep changing so rapidly that actually they don't seem to be connected to the trajectory of an actual student. So that another example is, my child who's in Rotten right now, went to Rotten with the understanding that it was a feeder school to be able to continue into Bryan McMahon. As we all know from our social emotional learning curriculum, it's pretty important for her to move with the peer group into whatever she does next. I think I just learned tonight that she might not get to. I think that what your choice program means is that my kid who's been working on IB level stuff with her peers will now be subject to a high school choice that might actually cut off her pathway that she had chosen, cut her away from all the peers that she has really, really painstakingly made during this pandemic, and set her adrift academically and socially. So I have concerns about how that might be able to happen too. Mostly, my concerns are about process and why all of these October meetings that seem crammed into like the next month weren't happening over the year before.
Tell me about, Kimberly.
Okay, so I guess a lot of my questions were just asked, but I guess the biggest question is, when are you guys actually going to answer our questions? You guys are, if we wrote them down, we're getting answers, but the ones that are being spoken, we're not getting any answers to those. So I would love to hear some of those things because my questions are being asked by other people. I have a child in Rotten or Royd right now, and he is, we switched schools. I did an intra-district transfer for him when he was going into kindergarten. Our school he was supposed to go to just didn't seem like the best fit for him, so I was really lucky to take advantage of that. So when this choice program started being talked about, it was like, okay, that seems like it could be a good idea, but then after hearing that it was going to be a lottery system and he could not track, like that wasn't going to sound like a good idea, and then now hearing that even if you are tracking in these, in these programs, you might not be able to continue, like the last mom said, that doesn't seem like it's fair to the kids. Why even try if you're going to have to retry for these programs over and over again? And then also, if we're going to be offering buses to students that apply for these pathways, are we going to be able to offer them to students who have gotten intra-district transfers? And then that way, they can also attend the schools and their parents don't have to drive them across town? And then also, the children that are, like, if my child is currently going to Rotten and we're, that's our district, we're good, can they take these pathway programs or not? Are they guaranteed a spot in the pathway if it's their current school? Or do they have to apply for a pathway and then could get shoved somewhere else because they want to take their current pathway?
Hannah? You want to make a public comment?
Just for clarification, these are public comments. The questions should be in the question cards, those, and those are the questions that we're answering, the ones in the question card. We are taking note of all the other comments that are being made.
Hi. My first time doing this. My name is Anna Sebastian. I have a daughter at CMS, and I wanted to say thank you for setting up the backup system at CMS. I don't know when that started, but it's been really great for us at the elementary school level. My daughter has made friends with kids from all over Norwalk, and so far, we're really satisfied with the teachers and staff there, although it's still new, so, right, that could change, and I appreciate having the option to change if it stops being so great. I also wanted to say that though she's learning Japanese through CMS, she also started learning Chinese on her own for reasons that I Chinese on her own for reasons that I don't fully understand. And I suspect, even though I suspect that she would stay at CMS through grade eight just because of inertia, I'm glad that you're implementing middle school choice so that if she would rather go to a school that offers Chinese, she could apply to Rotten through the lottery, which I just now learned offers Chinese, which is great. I have no idea what she's going to be until at 11, but I'm glad that she's not restricted to schools based on where we live, even though I really love where we live. I'm glad that she'll have the opportunity to apply to other schools if she wants a change. I also wanted to thank you Dr. Estella for replying to my emails so quickly over the last week because I had a bunch of questions and I'm sure you were getting swamped. And like I say, I still don't really understand why the first implementation plan would have been to not guarantee schools as described in the F A Qs. Like I get thinking 20% would opt in to change and thinking that everybody would participate in the lotto and just put their first choices in their own school if that's what they wanted. But I don't understand why the F A Qs was written that way, really highlighting that you were not guaranteed your own school. I just don't get it and I'm glad that you adjusted in response to our feedback. Thank you very much.
Lisa Henderson.
Good evening. Thank you for holding a public meeting. I'm Lisa Henderson and I have just a quick comment. I believe that all public meetings, including committee meetings, should be in person going forward. I believe that Zoom meetings should be secondary and any Zoom meetings should show who the other participants are that are zoomed into the meeting so that everybody is aware of who is a participant in the meeting. That's not the case now and many people feel like they are on their own little island. So I think that's important. Just listening to all the parents here, I'm a former parent. I'm an aunt to two children in the school system and I'm a taxpayer. I think that it might be wise to scrap the forced choice program for next year and maybe include parents, students, community stakeholders and taxpayers in the conversation going forward before you make a decision this big. I think that backroom decisions have to end and that the people in this room and all stakeholders in this city need to be involved in these major decisions. Thank you.
Audrey McCarthy.
Hello, it's good to see everyone and thank you for this opportunity to speak to everyone here. I come at this a little differently. Before I kind of tell you my story, I think, I think we all know that this was not rolled out well. I have a fifth grader in the elementary school and when I got that email, I almost had a heart attack, quite frankly. I went into Walmart and almost every parent at Walmart was talking about this. So just in future, and I don't mean to beat a dead horse, but just in future, I just hope that the communication is just a little better and significant changes in our children's education and our children's emotional welfare is rolled out slowly and it's communicated to all of us in a kind of timely manner. And I am a supporter of the Board of Education in Norwalk. I have benefited from the school choice that presently exists. A lot of people don't realize that we do have school choice in Norwalk and I have benefited from it. It doesn't look anything like this. And the fundamental reason why I do not go to my local school and I have chosen to go to another school is because my local school, their grade, their reading level, their reading below grade level. I think it's fundamentally important that all schools in Norwalk, this should be the fundamental criteria here. That all schools in Norwalk should be reading at or above grade level. That just should be the priority. And I'm so passionate about this. I don't like to send my kid out of district, but I've had to send her out of district and chosen a school in Norwalk where the kids are reading at or above grade level. We all should have that choice, quite frankly. That being said, I do like this system. I don't like the lottery system, but for those parents who do want to send their kids out of district, this is a decent system. I think it should be worked on with the input and the advice of parents and teachers so that it works. It is a good system. It just needs to be refined a little. And the fact that you are listening to our concerns and our complaints and you're allowing children to stay in their, to stay in their schools, that is a first choice. That is excellent. So I need to know that given that I have relied on the current school choice as it stands now, will my daughter be allowed to remain in the school system district that she is in and that she will track to her elementary school? Sorry, can I just have one more comment? One more comment is that I believe, I have a relative who is currently getting his GED and I just realized that here in Norwalk, we do not have a GED system. I think we really do need to educate a lot of the parents who do not have high school diplomas who want to go on to college.
We just want to be respectful of the two of you because we want to make sure of that.
Okay, thank you very much.
So that's a set of questions from the Paul Norwalk High School. Did the B O E amend what they voted on to guarantee our first choice?
Can you repeat the question?
Did the B O E amend what they voted on to guarantee our first choice?
We can put that as a proposal for a business meeting, yes. Because it's already in place, so we can put it. I think that question, do you want to answer that?
There has not been a subsequent vote. Just to, there has not been a subsequent vote at the board level. My understanding is that procedurally, it's not required, the vote for choice allows the superintendent to implement that. Again, our role is not in day-to-day operations. However, I don't think there's anything stopping us from having a revote at our next meeting, which I believe is on October 18th. And that's, those are not board meetings scheduled. All right, thank you.
So the next question is from Robin Rorouen and Bryan McMahon. It'd be super helpful if you all could explain how to handle the bus situation when we can't even solve buses right now. They're extremely late and some don't show up. Sorry, the next, the second part of that, they are extremely late and some don't show up.
Actually, we, we are under the impression in our data from the ZONAR is that we're actually at 98%, 97% on time arrival. So that's, we actually have the, and I welcome your emails if you, if you're experiencing something different. And that is the, that is the GPS data that we track. And I appreciate, and again, if you give me the specifics or if you email the Transportation Office, we will definitely address it.
We want to just move on with the next question. So next question from Daisy. What data supports children at 10 years old to choose a career path? Why isn't MPS focusing on students achieving grade level reading, writing and math skills?
So a lot of the research shows that career exploration in middle school is very productive. It allows students, and all the research shows that it promotes engagement, it promotes curiosity around different fields. We're not saying that by students exploring a pathway that they're going to definitely go into that journey, but it allows students to further explore and engage in different fields of interest, allowing students to engage in conversation and learning experiences in topics of interest really builds motivation and curiosity and builds critical thinking skills as well as exploration around different career paths.
Thank you. So this is from Mary Smith. Why does Silvermine not have priority for dual language? How will all these new programs happen by next fall? And how much will the buses cost?
Silvermine is the feeder school to West Rock that has the dual language program. So those students have priority to the dual language program.
And how will all these new programs happen by next fall?
That wasn't stated on the website that we have.
It's current practice. It's, all the students in the dual language program at West Rock, right now their feeder is Silvermine. And one of the things that I just want to highlight, one of the reasons why the lottery was being considered in terms of the pathways is because we wanted to provide guarantees for students that engage in the different pathways and option in the different programs if they wish to dwell their trajectory. One of the things that we have to keep in mind is how many seats we have available in every building and capacity. And in order for us to be able to provide the choice to students, we need to make sure that other students are selecting other options. And if students remain within a particular path, meaning just going to their feeder school and that feeder school building, like Winston's West Rock right now is at capacity, it's very difficult for us to offer additional seats for students in other places in the district unless we provide choice of other programs throughout the district at large.
The next question, how much will these, will the buses cost?
So we currently have three buses that are already slated within our fleet that we would dedicate to the choice program. So it's cost neutral. If we had to move into a fourth bus, it's $87,000 for that fourth bus.
Thank you. This is from Amy. I have watched the presentation to the board and I'm still not understanding. Why does the administration think specializing to K-8 schools is beneficial to students and their education? I would think the students should get, should get exposure to all pathways curriculum or would be best to figure out their interests.
So as I articulated earlier, the pathway program has been in place since we started creating magnet programs. The magnet program allows families to select a program of choice based on a particular model, approach or area of interest, if it's the arts or if it's the Backstreet model. Tracy has a focus on social emotional development and learning. So depending on parental interest, as early as elementary schools, parents are making a choice throughout the district for these different programs.
Thank you. This is from Betsy. What percentage of our students already have choice? How many seats are available?
So we, I don't have the exact percentage, but we have a number of choice options. So all of the magnet programs throughout the district are choice programs. We have a number of them, particularly in the high school and the elementary schools. In the middle school, we don't have as many and this pathway approach was going to afford the opportunity for additional choice for students that go beyond their feeder school.
Thank you. This question is from Scott. A slide indicated a computer-based program would select candidates from the lottery.
Can you start from the beginning?
I apologize. This is from Scott. A slide indicated a computer-based program would select candidates from the lottery. Someone had to develop that program so all concerned parents will, will be know that the variables used in the program and the weights given to each variable. So essentially how the, how that algorithm works.
Yeah, I mean, I can get more specifics about how the algorithm works, but it's randomly generated to be able to pick students that are in the lottery. There's, there's no waiting at the moment for the different programs. It's, you get in and then there's actually weight sets developed off of that as well. If you, let's say you have seven programs to choose from, you can, and you're only interested in two of them, you can hit into priorities, choices one and two. You don't get into those, then you go to your feeder school and you'll be put onto more specifically for those. And hopefully that kind of answers it, but it's randomly generated.
Well, and actually, I think one of the women up here said that choice is something different than the lottery. And so that's why I was wondering what the variables are and what they're getting. So will that be posted somewhere on the website?
It's random. There's no choice.
No, 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 no. Somebody actually had to generate that computer-based program. So there are variables to come in play.
So we will engage PowerSchool, which is the software that is utilized and we can include that response in the F A Q when we have more specificity.
So the next question from Nalini. If a student attends an IB feeder school through middle school choice, then is it guaranteed to be able to continue in an IB pathway in high school? What is the value of the pathway? What continuity is possible?
So one of the things that we're working between the two comprehensive high schools is to provide the IB program at both comprehensive high schools. So our goal is that regardless of which high school they select between Bryan McMahon and Norwalk High School, they will have an IB option. IB is more developed at Bryan McMahon High School and at Norwalk High School is at the beginning phases, but our goal is that the program will be offered at both high schools.
The next question is from Katie. Why are we doing pathways if the test scores are decreasing? Students cannot do simple math, write or read.
Pathways promote student achievement because it allows students not only to engage in the core academics, but also allows them to engage in the critical analytical thinking that they need to further develop their skills in areas of interest, inspires motivation and engagement. We can provide on the website all the research that speaks to that. We will add that to the F A Q.
So the next question is Giovanna. If a child is interested in a program in their neighborhood school, do they need to enter the lottery?
No, they do not. If they want to stay in their home school, they just stay in their home, in their home of feeder school.
Beatrice, is there a special focus for, for each middle school that is a focus that will, will aid in selection?
Can you repeat the question?
Yeah, sorry. Is there a special focus for each middle school that is a focus that will aid in selection?
So every middle school has different pathway options for families to choose from. And if the child selects that choice, then they have the ability to participate if that's part of their feeder or if they enter the lottery. or if they enter the lottery process for any available seats within the program.
This is from Mr. Smith. How does this affect after-school programming? I think we responded to this, but how does this affect after-school programming? Cost, et cetera?
After-school programming will continue as we've had in the past. We have a collaboration with the Congress Center and we will continue to engage in that collaboration to provide after-school programming.
Okay, thank you. I think this was, thanks for correcting, but how much will it cost to provide transportation for developing choice?
Will you adjust that question?
From Marie. Why aren't we promoting a well-rounded education to all students? Young students should be exposed to all areas before being channeled toward one and then not even talking to parents openly about decisions.
Can you repeat that again?
So why aren't we promoting a well-rounded education to all students? Young students should be exposed to all areas before being channeled toward one and not even talking to parents openly about decisions?
Students will continue to be channeled in terms of their core content areas. The pathway opportunities are for them to further explore beyond their core instruction around math, literacy, writing, and the other core instructional components. So this is not in lieu of, this is in addition to...
This is from Jen. Where was the communication rate down on this and how will we avoid this in the future?
Well, I can speak to, the town hall was originally intended to gather feedback and information from the community. I think that part of the challenge was that a lot, when the communication went out, a lot of people felt that it was said and done and not, didn't see the town hall as an opportunity to provide feedback to further develop the plan of action. So...
Next question?
So this is from Samir. How will MPS address the matter of substantial number of students currently not meeting the standard requirements prior to having them participate in middle school choice?
So we will, Rob, do you want to speak to some of the programs we have around the rest of that?
So these programs, these opportunities and pathways are not in lieu of our core instructional programs that we have and that we are working with. We have also talked a lot about interventionists and coaches at school supporting students, but these are enrichment opportunities. So it's important that this is not in lieu of any of the core instructional programs that we offer at the different schools.
Next question. How much time per week do children spend in lessons that relate to these pathways? Does how effective are they in...
How much work?
How much time per week do children spend in lessons that relate to these pathways? Does effective, or how effective are they in providing additional opportunities?
I think it's going to be a little different in each of the schools, but an example that I'll mention is at West Rock's. They have the marine science pathway, and so therefore, they might be taking field trips to the maritime aquarium and they may have an enrichment opportunity tied to that type of marine science lesson. So, you know, depending on their schedule, it could be one special a week, but then also field trip opportunities. They might have guest speakers come in and so across the board in different components, they would have those different opportunities.
So Rob, is it like, does it cost you about a week? Or is it like a 10, 15 hour week?
It would be more of like a special which is offered every other day in middle school. Sorry, 30 minutes in middle school. Yeah, two or three times a week.
This is from Christina. Taxpayers should have votes since overburdened. Why was there no meeting? Why and who decided each child wasn't guaranteed a spot at their district? How is that fair and equitable?
I think we would address that if the child has a MTC.
So this is from Molly. For students choosing to stay in their neighborhood feeder middle school, are they guaranteed a spot in the specific program they choose? And do they have to choose a program?
If they stay in...
If students choosing to stay in their neighborhood feeder middle school, are they guaranteed a spot in the specific program they choose? And do they have, and do they have to choose a program?
So they will have a seat in the school. Every school has already, like for instance, in Walton Elementary, they have a process by which students are placed in the different pathways within the building.
So this is from Randy. When will the latest policy on 9/29 be amended or voted on?
The latest policy for?
The latest policy on September 29th. Be amended or voted on.
Now, I'm changing my question. I wanted to know twice the degree. Like, can we opt out of the pathway or not? Yes or no?
The program, whatever program of options are in the school, your child will be aligned to one of those choices.
Our kids are not being educated until after 12 o'clock, right out of school. They basically are...
Can we move to the next question?
So this is from Mandy. If a parent or student is interested in any, in only a pathway offered at their feeder school, will they have the option to apply to only that pathway and stay in their feeder school? Opt out?
What is opt-out?
Can you repeat that question?
Sorry. If a parent or student is interested in only a pathway offered at their feeder school, will they have the option to apply to only that pathway and stay in their feeder school?
They can stay in their feeder school, they wouldn't have to apply.
So this is from Leah. I think we answered this, but I just wanted to ask Rob again too. What goes into PowerSchool's generated formula? Is there a transparency and how is that equitable? I think we're going to be posting that once we pass PowerSchool. Thank you, Rob.
We'll take one more question.
So how are you going to staff this program when you can't staff so many classes in high school? You're going to be learning on the... And how will you pay for buses when you're so restrictive on bus usage from home now? So it's more of a second. How are you going to staff this program when you can't staff so many classes in high school?
So we continue, many of these programs are already in existence and are staffed. Yes, we have the same challenges that many districts across the nation are having in terms of staffing across the board, absolutely. But our HR team has been working very diligently to ensure that our vacancies are filled. And relative to districts similar to ours, we are doing quite well in filling those vacancies despite the national trends of shortages across the profession. Do you want one final question before we close?
So this is from a student, Amelia. Why do I have to choose the rest of my life how a 10-years-old if I have a life ahead?
So you wouldn't have to choose. This is an option for you to further explore and it allows you to broaden your, it allows you to broaden your scope of interest and it helps you understand what is available in different fields. And if you choose to engage in a different pathway throughout your trajectory, you have that option as well. Just in closing, there was a question that was asked about students that are currently in the program that I think is important to answer. Those students will continue to stay in that pathway. This does not impact their work. This pathway conversation was for entering six-way students, not students that are already in the program or have selected a different choice through the current process that we have in place. So I just want to make sure that I reiterate that because I don't want students that are already in programs to think that they will be removed from those programs. They will continue in the programs that they've been and continue their path forward in direction. I want to thank everyone for joining us this evening and we value your feedback. We will continue to take your feedback and utilize it to inform our practice. These are, as I articulated at the beginning and towards the end of the presentation, additional opportunities for community conversations and building understanding around the middle school choice process that has been an ongoing process throughout the district that started several years ago in providing choice through magnet programs. And we're looking forward to continuing the conversation so that we continue to offer students pathways of interest, but also continue to focus on their core learning skills. Again, thank you for being here this evening and we look forward to seeing you at the Middle School Choice Fair.